Good evening. I call to order the January 27th City Council meeting. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance. Mr. Slope, will you lead us in?
That will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Slope. So for all those in attendance, if you wish to speak at a scheduled public hearing or at the citizens' comments period, please sign in at the appropriate sheet in the back of chambers. Item two is adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Slope. Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five zero. Item three is matters from the mayor. The only thing I have is I had the opportunity to participate in the MLK walk on the 20th, and it was cold, but we made it, enjoyed it, and I also it was the first time that three of my grandchildren were there that walked with me, and so that was special. So thanks, Ms. Randolph, for setting that up. Item four is matters from City Council. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
A little late.
Thank you, Mr. Kami. Item six is to consider proclaiming. Item six is to consider proclaiming February as Black History Month. I'll call on Mr. Kami to read the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. One moment, please. Proclamation P-25-01. Whereas Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, distinguished African-American author, editor, scholar, and historian, who is known as the father of Black history, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in September 1915 and launched Negro History Month in 1926. And whereas, since 1976, every American president has proclaimed February as Black History Month. And whereas, the theme of this year's celebration is African-Americans and labor, established by the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, this year's theme underscores the diverse and significant ways in which labor, whether voluntary or involuntary, skilled or unskilled, has been at the core of the Black American experience. Therefore, be it resolved, the mayor of Waynesboro, Virginia, on behalf of the City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing February 2025 as Black History Month and urges all citizens to join in celebrating the accomplishments of African-Americans during Black History Month and encourages the people of Waynesboro to recognize the many talents, achievements, and contributions that African-Americans make to their communities. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the council transmit a copy of this proclamation to the curator of the African-American History Museum, Waynesboro, Virginia, for appropriate distribution. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Waynesboro to be affixed this the 27th day of January 2025. Sign Kenny Lee, Mayor, City of Waynesboro, Virginia.
Good evening, everyone, the City Council, the mayor, vice mayor. I want to say thank you to the city of Waynesboro for the many years that you have recognized Black History Month, the many years that we have received this proclamation. It's just a confirmation that we work together, that we love one another through our ups and downs, that we know that, guess what, everyone is needed, everyone. So as a representation of the city of Waynesboro, as I represent Port Republic Road, Shallow Avenue, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the police department, thank you to this council, thank you to the citizens of Waynesboro for coming together. We had, at this march, every district in Waynesboro represented. I never know who I'm inviting, I never know who's going to come, but I was very thankful that we all were represented. So I'll say again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randolph. Item seven is to receive the Planning Commission's 2024 annual report. Call on Mrs. Leslie Tate, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and members of council. It is my pleasure this evening to present the Planning Commission's annual report for 2024. The full report was in your packet, and you'll know from the full report that it was a busy year for the Planning Commission. I will just hit some of the highlights at our presentation this evening. So some of the development highlights that the Planning Commission reviewed, we had five zoning text amendments, and some of these were really kind of fixing either mistakes or kind of simple things within the code. But we covered townhouse parking requirements, parking lot landscaping to create a little bit more flexibility for staff, a correction to our temporary special events ordinance. We made some changes to our accessory buildings and structures, mainly just a clarification in the way that we were always interpreting that ordinance. And then kind of the more substantive text amendment is the addition of cottage court housing within the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission reviewed two rezonings, one at 300 North Augusta Avenue, and that was a combination of residential and mixed business zoning to light industrial. And then the larger rezoning application that was reviewed was what we have termed the Smith Farm Planned Unit Development that rezoned that property from RS-12 to a planned unit development to kind of create greater density in certain areas and preservation of the property in other areas. So that came with a very specific development code. The Planning Commission also had reviewed four conditional use permits. And then lastly, the Planning Commission reviewed four preliminary plats. So Creekwood Phase III was for 87 lots. The Creekwood at Bookerdale plat was for 29 lots. The Rossar Avenue Townhouse Amendment was for 90 lots, and then Hopeman and King Townhouse Development for 80 lots. This chart shows development applications that have been reviewed, so going back to 2014, to last year. And you can see there are some years where, you know, rezonings might spike, there might be more rezonings and less preliminary plats. But just kind of as a general rule, things have stayed kind of consistent in terms of number of development applications reviewed, even if one type kind of rises above any given year. This shows the locations of the different development applications that were reviewed. So the yellow Xs are for those preliminary plats. So just as a reminder, that means the property is zoned for development, and the plat just comes in to subdivide the property according to the existing zoning ordinance, but it still gets reviewed by the Planning Commission. The red X is representative of those rezoning applications, and the Smith Farm is the one that's north of the Hopeman Parkway. And then the blue Xs are representative represent those conditional use permit applications that we saw this year. So kind of a good mix throughout the city. Our construction, and specifically residential construction, did remain strong. This shows approved subdivision developments that we have been seeing development on. So there's construction started at the Rossar Avenue, and then the Summit Towns subdivisions. Construction continues at Ivy Commons, Creekwood Village, and Anna Marie. The final phases of Evershire still remain under construction, and then those new preliminary plats approved at Creekwood Village, Creekwood at Bookerdale, and then over here at the Hopeman and King intersection. So building has, you know, remained consistent. This shows back to 2019 the number of new residential building permits, and the blue line represents single family. So you, you know, you will see, maybe surprising to some, that we saw a dip. So we had 165 new residential building permits for single family in 2023, and last year that number was down a little bit to 138. Excuse me, 139 permits, 138 that were single family, one manufactured home, and then we did have one multifamily project approved also. But based on kind of the rezoning and the preliminary plats that have been approved, you know, we would expect this number to rise in future years. And then to kind of talk a little bit about some larger kind of regional planning efforts and design stages. So the West Main and Broad Street streetscape projects, which were funded in a 2020 round of smart scale, are under design. The West Main project is from Hopeman Parkway to Ludwitt, and the project replaces the center turn lane with a plan and median and adds a continuous sidewalk on one side. That project is administered by VDOT. It's in the engineering phase, and we held a second public meeting in October of 2024. Kind of on the same timeline, maybe a little behind, the West Main project, also administered by VDOT, is the Broad Street project, and that project is going to increase safety and add pedestrian improvements. It's also in the engineering phase, and the first public meeting on that project was held in August on some initial design plans. So we continue to work with VDOT and support them as they take these projects through full engineering. You might have seen that the 14th Street sidewalk project is currently under construction. That was funded in 2016 with what we're formerly known as open container funds. It's going to provide a continuous sidewalk from Wayne Avenue to Magnolia Avenue along 14th Street. It'll upgrade the pedestrian crossings and then curb ramps and high-visibility crosswalks. So construction did start in the fall, and even though it's snowy and covered up, is expected to conclude in late spring, and we continue to have construction progress meetings on that project. Another important thing to note, as far as kind of long-range, long-term planning goes, is staff has been successful and made applications for the Virginia Highway Safety Program, or H-SIP. In the 2024 grant round, staff submitted an application for 20 intersections that would focus on pedestrian improvements at 20 different locations. And then also important to note that we did receive funding for our 2023 applications, and that include improvements for nine unsignalized intersections, 25 different intersections for pedestrian improvements, and then some curve delineation improvements along East Main, kind of right outside of Basic City. The smart scale transportation grants were open, and the round six was opened in spring of 2024. We did put in three applications, so a Ludwitt pedestrian project that would put a sidewalk on one side of Ludwitt. We also applied for what we've called the Waynesboro Transit Access Project, but it was for bus shelter and bus stop improvements at I might not get the number exactly right, I think it was six or seven different locations. And then lastly, we applied for the Blue Ridge Tunnel Connector Trail to kind of pick up where the East Main Street streetscape would end. We, but nothing's been finalized by this. We will be notified, notified late this year if we were awarded funding. But we do know that in the recommended scenario for funding, so what we likely will receive funding for is we the Waynesboro Transit Access Project was included in that recommended scenario. And that was kind of an attempt to kind of focus on the six or seven bus stop locations that the data shows are utilized the most and kind of improve shelters and pedestrian kind of connectivity and ADA accessibility at those locations. And I also don't, I believe it was roughly a $2 million ask. So if that is awarded, we'll have that exciting project. And then just so you're aware, those smart scale applications are it's a competitive process, a statewide competitive process, and the applications are scored on five different metrics. And then all of that is kind of assessed against the cost of the project. So that's all I have for the Planning Commission's annual report. It was a busy year. We do have the chair of the Planning Commission here, Will Florrie, if he would like to say a few words, and I just appreciate the time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm your, for those of you, I think I know just about everybody. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission, Will Florrie. I just want to take a quick opportunity to thank our staff. Our planning staff does a really good job educating us. We look at, I look at our job as Planning Commission as being making good recommendations to council and sort of figuring out what the right balances are so that hopefully your job is easier when these applications come from the Planning Commission to you. Very often, that involves trying to strike the right balance between considering the members of the public that show up and give us feedback and trying to prioritize both growth and access to housing, particularly when we have growth years like we have, at least as long as I've been on the Planning Commission. And we couldn't do that without subject matter experts, and we have several very good subject matter experts in our planning department. So I wanted to take this opportunity to point out that the report, the only thing that I did was write the little blurb at the beginning. So any grammatical errors in that are my responsibility alone. Beyond that, that is, that is a summary of all of the hard work that your planning staff has done over the last year. And I would encourage you to look at it and consider their value in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions regarding the report? Okay, thank you all. Item eight is to adopt a resolution amending the city's fund balance policy for the general fund. Call on Mr. McCormick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The purpose of the city's fund balance policy is to establish a level of committed fund balance required for the city's general fund and fund balance management. It sets forth the levels deemed appropriate for the city's operation and the protocols for the use and maintenance of the established levels. The policy is set, this policy is established on a modified accrual basis of accounting for governmental funds. The purpose of bringing it forth this evening is to update the policy, to remove language regarding the committed reserve at the Augusta County Service Authority. The reserve was liquidated and distributed to the Augusta County Service Authority in August 2024 via council appropriation, amendment to the budget, and then subsequent council appropriation, so that that language is no longer necessary. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, and if not, you can adopt this via resolution this evening if you'd, so like.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fund balance policy for the general fund?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Slope, and have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five, five. Ms. Randolph, you all don't have to say if you don't want. Okay, great. Glad to have you. Item nine on the agenda is to consider adopting a resolution establishing a budget policy, budget policy for the city of Waynesboro. Mr. McCormick.
Thank you again, Mr. Lee. An essential element of good financial stewardship for all local governments is a legal, transparent, and intentional adoption of the fiscal year operating budget. The attached policy takes longstanding budget practices and adopts them into a single budget policy. As you recall, during the summer of 2024, we had a credit review done. This was one of the things that came up, so that you can just take this policy, it takes what we do, puts it into writing, and you can hand it to any auditor, any citizen, or any creditor and say, here's how we adopt a budget, and then they can go back over a number of years and say, yes, you guys comply with your policy.
Good, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Stan? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing a budget policy for the city?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, five, five. Item 10 is to consider introducing an ordinance effectuating the commercial property assessed clean energy C-PACE financing program. Mr. Hitchens, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you may know, the economic development and tourism staff is currently updating its strategic plan. As part of that process, we put together a task force comprised of two council members, two EDA members, some at-large members and staff. That task force was presented with the five key goals that staff has proposed based on research over the summer. The program we're going to talk about tonight addresses two of those goals and helps to achieve those two goals. And those two are preparing opportunities for future investment, and the second one is providing local business support. As the mayor mentioned, the program is the commercial property assessed clean energy. C-PACE is much easier to say. And the C-PACE program in Virginia is managed by the Virginia PACE Authority, VPA. It is an energy-efficient financing tool. It offers 100% financing to building owners over a long term. Typically, it's a 20- to 25-year term. It's good for new construction, as well as existing businesses or existing structures, excuse me. For a contractor to do the work under this program, they need to be registered with the VPA. And there are currently 18 other Virginia localities that participate in this program. In the Shenandoah Valley would be Harrisonburg, Winchester, Shenandoah County, and the city of Roanoke. The loan is attached to the property, meaning that if a business, a building owner sells his building, the loan goes with the new owner, unless they make arrangements to pay it off as part of the process. How does it work? A locality opts into the statewide Virginia code, which is what we're hoping to do and get started tonight. The staff works with the C-PACE program to educate and inform owners of buildings, contractors, and so forth on the possibility of the program. Owners and contractors develop the projects, and VPA does the rest. They vet the project, vet the commercial lenders, they put together all the closing documents. So why is this important? It's a no-cost-to-the-city benefit to building owners and property owners. It will help revitalize buildings and create increased value to those buildings. It will also have the opportunity to have more energy-efficient new buildings. The program covers any, anything from HVAC unit to a door. So anything that can be considered energy-efficient. There's also provision for natural disaster prevention, i.e. flood prevention, water reclamation, other program, other items can fit into this program. Potentially can attract new developers and new projects to the area. And like I mentioned before, it also can cover environmental remediation programs, projects. Process, we're asking you to introduce the ordinance tonight. Due to timing and a two-advertising restriction for this, we would have a public hearing and a second reading and two meetings on February 24th. Happy to address any questions.
I got one. Does your department have a plan set forth to promote this to business owners and landholders? And what, kind of give us a brief overlook of it?
Sure. We, our typical way of doing that is a monthly newsletter for email addresses that we have. We have a plan pending budget approval to increase that opportunity for email addresses and lists in the next budget cycle.
Just out of curiosity, Gray, have you socialized this with anyone in the business community and of level of interest or property owners?
We've talked to one building, the Virginia Metal Crafters Building, and they're actually interested in doing something like this.
Okay, great.
Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? This ordinance will be subject to a public hearing and received final consideration at the February 24th meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Hitchens. Item 11 is a report presented by Gary Christ, Director of Emergency for the Department of Emergency Management and Emergency Operations Center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. I'll try to be brief. It's not in my history, but I'll try to be brief. Mr. Hamp told me I had eight minutes. I said eight hours, and he didn't smile, so anyway. So we're going to talk a little bit about what we do in the Emergency Operations Center and in the Department of Emergency Management. This is just a picture of one of our dispatchers at work today inside the 911 center. It's a very technologically advanced department. The dispatchers have to be able to multitask and manage a variety of different software programs throughout, throughout the day, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. Our department does a number of different things for the city, and I'll touch briefly on those as we go through. So an overview, we're going to talk about our 911 center first. We have a consolidated 911 center, and what that means is that we, we receive calls and process calls for police, fire, and EMS. We also do after-hours support for our Public Works Department. Their, their phone messages, et cetera, can allow residents, for example, if they had a water main break or there was some other public works after-hours emergency, they can call our department and we'll, we'll notify the appropriate Public Works divisions. In 2024, the 911 center handled over 29,000 dispatched incidents. That means that required a police officer, a firefighter, or fire truck, or an ambulance to be, to respond to an incident. And over 47,000 telephone interactions, meaning they were back and forth with callers, making different calls out to affect appropriate response. So busy time. We also work to use text to 911. It's a relatively new technology in 911. It's only been out about probably five to six years. There was a lot of concern in the industry when text to 911 took off, that it was going to be overwhelming, that the 911 centers wouldn't be able to handle it with current staffing. And I'm probably jinxing myself here, it'll explode tomorrow. But we only did about 322 text to 911 calls in 2024. If, looking around the country, nationally, that's, that percentage is about right. It hasn't, it hasn't taken off as we thought it would, and we actually encourage people And we actually encourage people, if you're able to talk, we prefer you call 911 so that we can ask the appropriate questions and get the appropriate information. You're limited on what you can do with texting, but texting is very efficient. If someone either can't communicate verbally, it's great for hearing impaired individuals, as well as if you have someone in a situation where it's not safe for them to talk and they can text back and forth with us. We use a priority dispatch system for EMS. Some localities do that, some don't. That requires special, special screening by our certified emergency medical dispatchers that determine the appropriate response. Does it need a basic life support ambulance? Does it need an advanced life support ambulance? Do we need to have a fire truck with advanced life support accompany the ambulance or for manpower? And in some cases, do we need to send a law enforcement officer either for law enforcement responsibilities or to assist in medical care? For example, in a cardiac arrest situation in the city, the dispatcher is giving what we call pre-arrival instructions, which is telling someone how to, how to do CPR. There are times we're telling people how to control bleeding. We've even delivered a baby over the telephone. But it's pre-arrival instructions, but in a CPR event, we're going to send police, fire, and EMS. Police carry AEDs in the city, and they are often quicker to get there than fire or EMS who are responding from a station. And certainly that has been credited on several occasions with saving lives. So we were one of the first localities in Virginia to put AEDs on police cars in 1997. And we've been doing it ever since, and it's been a really successful program. Again, emergency medical pre-arrival instructions, that's telling someone over the phone how to do things for someone until EMS arrives. Deliver a baby, CPR, control bleeding, clear an obstructed airway, and the list goes on. We use medically approved protocols by our medical director that follow the ASTM guidelines. So that's something that we do almost every day. We're giving pre-arrival instructions. And we do that as well for fire and we do it for, for law enforcement. We, and it could be as simple as if a house is on fire and someone can't get out to close the door, to stuff rags under the door, to get close to the floor, to get close to a window, et cetera. Law enforcement, can you lock yourself in the house? Can you lock yourself and secure yourself in a room? So we do pre-arrival instructions for all the calls we take. Our community is new to Pulse Point Respond CPR app. If you haven't gotten that, there's a link to it on our webpage. Pulse Point Respond is, we actually got the funding for that through a grant that the Central Shenandoah EMS Council was able to obtain. And we're doing that region wide in every district and planning, every locality and planning District Six. And what that does, if you're CPR trained and you have the app on your phone and you've signed up for it, it alerts you to a cardiac arrest where CPR is needed within a mile of where you might be. And it only does it in public places. So if you, if it was to happen and you were shopping in Walmart or shopping at Kohl's and you're CPR trained and willing to do that, there's no obligation. But it helps get CPR started sooner. It also tells you where the closest AED is, if there's one in the store, where is it in the store? Automatic external defibrillator. And it, the whole purpose behind this program is to get citizen responders that are out close to people and get CPR started sooner. All of you are probably aware that the sooner you start CPR, the greater likelihood that a life can be saved. High quality CPR is the single most important thing that you can do in a cardiac arrest situation. And this app helps to do that. Comlink and amateur radio, we actually have ham radio equipment adjacent to the 911 center in our, where we would have our incident command room. And we participate with the local amateur radio club and the emergency amateur radio emergency services. If we were to have a wide scale disaster in our region and normal communications would be disrupted, ham radio can come in and set up, and that allows us to communicate with our neighbors, with the hospital, with the Department of Emergency Management, to be able to coordinate response efficiently. Comlink is a program, we use an application called RIOS, which is radio interoperability software. And it lets us interconnect radio systems to any participant in Virginia. And every locality in Virginia uses that software. So if we had a major crisis here in the city and we had to bring in responders from outside of Waynesboro, from Virginia Beach, from wherever, we can interconnect radio systems. We use our RAVE emergency notification system. We also use that to notify employees of delayed openings or city building closures, but that's our public notification system. On our webpage, there is the ability to subscribe to that and give additional information about your cell phone, about yourself, about any emergency or handicap or disabled people that live in your residence. And the most important thing to take away about 911 is it, think of it in terms of a, of a wheel. And you've got your spokes on a wheel, but your, your hub of your public safety system is your 911 center. Everything starts there and spools out to the appropriate responders. So we're staffed. We have 12 authorized full-time positions and six to eight part-time positions. We're currently have three full-time vacancies that we're in recruitment for. Fortunately, we had a, we had a good, robust return on applications recently that we just went through pre-screening and testing and will be interviewing in the next few weeks. And hopefully we're able to fill those three vacancies. There is a national 911 staffing crisis that's been going on for about five to eight years. And it, it kind of ebbs and flows. At one point, 50% of all the 911 centers in the United States were suffering a staffing crisis that was affecting the ability to have full staffing. So we're not alone in that. Another issue with 911 is it's a high-stress job. There have been a number of studies that have been done and published both by the National Emergency Number Association as well as by the National Institutes of Health, published a European study that talks about PTSD rates for 911 dispatchers. And why is that so high for a 911 dispatcher? Because they don't have the outlet that a lot of, like our other public safety responders have. Certainly, they have high-stress jobs that result in, in similar. But the studies that have been done actually show that 24% of 911 dispatchers deal with PTSD. And three to five, 3.5% of those report that PTSD to be so severe that affects their daily life. Why do I say that? It's because I want to, I want to share with you all that that job is incredibly stressful. It's not physically demanding in, in and of itself. They work in an air-conditioned heated room. They're not exposed to a lot of the stress and threats that our firefighters and police officers are. But they're incre, they're, 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 they deal with highly stressful situations multiple times during the day. They might be giving CPR instructions to a mother whose child is not breathing, hang up the phone and go right into someone who's being assaulted or raped or armed robbery or whatever might be going on. And that, it doesn't happen every minute of every hour of every day, thank goodness, but it does happen. And they don't get the opportunity to pause. Oftentimes, they don't get outlet until the end of the shift 12 hours later. So it's just an incredibly stressful job, and those employees need to be recognized for that. There were two bills this year at the General Assembly to allow 911 dispatchers to get PTSD covered under workers' compensation. Both of those bills failed. This is the fourth year in a row that that's happened. Unlike their counterparts in public safety that already get that covered under workers' comp. So hopefully that'll come up again in future years and maybe something that we can talk about being supportive to the General Assembly. 911 dispatchers undergo comprehensive training. It can take six to nine months, sometimes even a little longer to fully release a 911 dispatcher. They have to go to the police academy, just like our police officers do. And there's an incredible amount of internal training that they go through inside the city before they're ever released to work on their own. There's a national movement to reclassify 911 dispatchers as part of public safety. Believe it or not, right now they're classified as clerical. So there's a hope to, what that would do would be open the door to other benefits down the road that they're not currently afforded. There are bills in the General Assembly this year to enhance benefits similar to our fire, police, and EMS partners that would allow early retirement. Currently, they're not afforded that. There's six House and Senate bills this year that all kind of look the same. They're, all of them as of before this, this afternoon were in committee. New technologies and increasing call volumes certainly may require consideration of additional staffing in the future. The new technologies I talk about, we'll hit very briefly under next generation 911 here in just a minute. And the big thing to say about these folks is this is not a job that you can just walk into and that you can just do very easily. We test these folks to make sure they have the skills and ability using industry standard testing when they apply. What we're really looking for is someone that has really good multitasking skills because they're often talking, typing, and listening at the same time. And you've got to be able to, to, to deal with all that and process it and get the appropriate things done in a very short order. So it takes a really unique individual to do that job. Next generation 911, we're preparing to roll that out. What that's doing is it's going to take our current 911 system from copper-based telephone lines like we've known for years to voice-over IP technology. That's happening nationwide, not just in Waynesboro, not just in Virginia, but it's happening all across the country. There's a designated nationwide ESI net or emergency services information network that'll be carrying that traffic. We hope to be deployed by March of this year, March or April. We've been waiting on some circuit issues through the telephone companies. But our equipment and technology is ready to go as of today. So we're just waiting on that final cut over piece. It will greatly enhance call processing, transfers, and interactions with other public safety answering points around Virginia. So all of you are aware that we're currently in the middle of the SAW regional radio system deployment. We, we procured that jointly with our neighbors through L3 Harris. It's a P25 Phase II trunk digital radio system in technical terms. It will greatly enhance our communication system for our first responders. It will allow everything from our portable radios, for example, that are carried by fire and police officers. We'll have GPS and we'll actually be able to see those subscribers actually move on a map. Whereas right now, we have that ability at the car, but we don't have that ability in an individual that might be pursuing someone on foot or in a burning building. So a lot of new technologies coming with that as well as enhanced interoperability with our neighbors. The microwave and tower work is going on now. In fact, they worked at our location all weekend. And they're putting that system in and we'll be rolling out the dispatch consoles and the rest of the infrastructure, including the radios and the police cars, fire trucks, ambulances into the individuals this spring in anticipation of doing coverage testing during the full foliage period during the summer. We're optimistic that we hopefully will be able to cut over by the end of this calendar year. Emergency management, the department coordinates with FEMA and state partners for all things emergency management. When we talk about emergency management, we talk about all hazards. Natural, man-made, technological, all hazards is what emergency management does. We have a regional emergency operations plan with our neighbors and SAW as well as a regional hazard mitigation plan, which is under revision. It'll be brought to you later this year for consideration. And we do regional hazmat planning. We, my department also does plans reviews for all the local skilled nursing and assisted living facilities. That's required by the licensing agencies that we see those and we participate in their review. We plan for preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation to any large-scale emergency in the city. And my department helps to coordinate that, all pieces of that response. We deal with emergency sheltering. We work with emergency management grants, the local emergency management program grant that we get every year to provide some funding to support our program. Mitigation grants to help harden our, our locality and prevent future damages. We did a very robust flood mitigation grant in the late 1907, or 1990s where we purchased 15 homes in the flood plain to repent, to prevent repetitive flood losses. We coordinate with all the city departments, community partners, Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, and all our neighbors for emergency planning and response. The Community Emergency Response Team is a regional project that we work, we do with our neighbors in Stanton and Augusta as well as with Augusta Health. We, that trains the lay public on how to not, not only take care of theirselves following a disaster because the first 72 hours following a major disaster, you could be in a position where you're on your own. And CERT helps train you to be able to do that as well as to be able to be a resource to us in the event of a major disaster. They helped out during COVID with helping things like direct traffic at vaccination clinics, things that took away the responsibility from our first responders that were busy doing other things. And we do local emergency management, spelling error, sorry, planning, training, and exercises with our, our partners in our, in our locality. We did an active shooter training and exercise earlier this year that was an all part, all of our public safety did that. EMS, we talked about that the other day, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on it. But we do coordinate emergency medical services delivery in the city under Chapter 28. And again, I don't really have anything to add other than what we talked about the other day. And last but not least, we do coordinate health and safety for all the city departments. We do safety planning and training. There's a city safety policy that we helped develop. We review accidents. We manage workers' comp for the entire city in the Line of Duty Act program. And we coordinate all of the physical exams for all of our public safety employees. So we're a busy department. We have a lot of work that we do. We touch a lot of different pieces. We manage all the emergency generators for every department, the security system for, and cameras for the entire, all the, all of the city. So we have a pretty robust program. We do, we've got our fingers kind of in a lot of different areas. But I, I just want to drive home one last point about our 911 dispatchers. Is there a very loyal, dedicated group of hard-working individuals? I appreciate the recognition that council's given in the past and compensation in other areas. They really do work hard for Waynesboro and all the citizens that we have. So I'm available for any questions if you have any.
I have a question, Mr. Christ. First of all, thanks for coming out this evening, giving such a great presentation, both today and also the other day during our retreat. I have a question under staffing, in, in particular about the 9/11 operators. You mentioned that there's a national movement to reclassify them as public safety, whereas they are currently classified as clerical. Must we on a local level wait for the national movement or is there anything that we can do?
You can certainly support that through whether council wanted to adopt a resolution and send it to our federal elected officials. That's certainly one way that can help. This has been an ongoing movement. There's actually a bill that's been setting, waiting to go through committee for over two years that hasn't moved an inch. What this does for us is it opens up other opportunities down the road like the Line of Duty Act and other things that they may not be there today, but until we can get this reclassified through the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act, we can't move an inch. And these are clearly, they really are the first first responders, and having that language be really important.
So you would, you would sometime in the future, if that was approved, have public safety and an administrative type staff to do the other things that you do?
Yes, I'd have, we'd have non, non-public safety people that would do the non, not, we're really talking about the 911 dispatchers getting that, that recognition. And again, that would open doors that would allow future growth and future movement that currently they're precluded from being part of because they're not considered part of public safety, even though that's what they do every day.
You mentioned getting the radios in the vehicles. Is that similar to what the chief has to go through to get the vehicles outfitted? Is that the same process?
I actually work with their fleet manager in the police department and all the, everything radio comes through us. So I provide the radios to their fleet manager and then he has them installed through their group. So yes, all of the existing radios that we have will be swapped out. That's part of the contract that we signed with L3 Harris. So they'll get swapped out. We'll have all the motor, the older radios that we can put on eBay or GovDeals and sell. But all they'll come out, all of the handheld radios will get exchanged out for new L3 Harris radios.
Thanks, Ken. Any other questions, Mr. Chris?
Mayor Lee, I don't have any other questions, but I would like to put on record that I would be interested personally to check into adopting the that I would be interested personally to check into adopting the resolution, see what we need to do as a council, so.
Thank you very much.
Just put that on record. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. I'm available at any time if you ever have any other questions.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Item twelve is to consider approving a motion to include the Sunset Park Shelter in the Department of Parks and Recreation Shelter Reservation Program and approving certain fees related to event size and service. Ms. Amp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I thought I'd stretch my legs a little bit. You'll recall from our last meeting that Dwayne Jones gave a fairly comprehensive and effective summary of his recommendation for shelter rental fees. And so we've brought that recommendation back for your consideration. And so basically, the question is two or three-fold. First, do we want to include the Sunset Park Shelter in the Parks and Recreation Shelter Reservation Program? And this slot illustrates the pricing for an event under one hundred people. So there are three rental blocks at Sunset. Most of our other parks have simply two rental blocks, but because of the unique feature of that park, Dwayne has added this six PM to ten PM rental block. So a block is forty, and then recognizing the value of that facility, all-day rental is a hundred dollars. So that's question number one. It's basically, are you prepared to receive the recommendation, approve the recommendation that we include that shelter in our reservation program? And then secondly, you likely recall that Dwayne also talked about some additional fees depending on the nature of the event. And so if your event has alcohol, there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee. And/or if your event relies on rental tents, tables, and chairs, that requires our staff to do some rearranging, removing of features, benches, tables, et cetera. And so there's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar additional fee for that. And so that is question number two. Do you accept these additional fee charges based on the nature of the event? And then finally, we talked about large events with guests over one hundred individuals. And Dwayne recommends, and his staff recommend, a five-hundred-dollar damage deposit. So if there's no damage to the facility, that obviously the deposit is returned to the applicant. So if there are questions, I'm happy to answer those or furnish additional information, but we bring this to you for your consideration this evening.
Were we still placing a limitation on the total number of events for the year?
So that's a great question, Mr. Sloot. What Dwayne presented at his last, originally, was in two thousand and twenty-five, large event rentals over one hundred will be limited to twelve per year to maintain maximum public use of the pavilion. So what Dwayne has suggested is that we limit the large number of events. And we regard the rental season to be made through October, which is an average of two per month. Now, that's interesting language there. So average two per month suggests to me that you might have a month in which there are more than two or fewer than two. But I think if it helps council consider, I think two per month for that rental season might be a more simple way to look at it, and we'd simply remove that. And so we'll have twelve. But again, that only, the way that the policy is currently written, that's only for those large, one-hundred-person events. You could conceivably fill up the whole rental season then with less than one-hundred-person events on those smaller blocks. So if there's concern or you want to clarify that, we should probably work on that a little bit before a decision is made. But right now, the only limitation is on those one-hundred-person events.
No, I don't have any questions. As you recall, I suggested that we move this forward to tonight. And so I did not receive any comments regarding this, and so.
And the only thing that I might offer is that in addition to the damage waivers, maybe classification of damage or cleaning fee waiver, right? So in events where, so what's our recovery with synthetic streamers being thrown at a wedding, right?
Right.
And how are we going to clean that up? And it seems to me like the damage waiver is, if something is damaged, whereas if you violate the terms and conditions of the fine print, there are no, there is no recourse for the city in terms of recovering the cost to remediate the trash, excess trash collection or associated cleanup. So it seems to me like if we just classify damage or understand that damage includes any necessary cleanup fees, it's almost like an Airbnb, right?
Right.
A little cleanup fee in case you don't follow the rules.
So I thought that Dwayne had included, okay, potential damage fees. So excessive trash, broken tables, so items that are broken, and then staples. So let me ask this, Mr. Short, is that scheduled there sufficiently specific and comprehensive? Or did you have something beyond that in mind? I don't see the sort of thrown material that kind of.
Right, that's the only thing. Because I'm thinking like weddings and, like, you know, people might just forget.
Yep, streamers, that kind of thing. Okay.
I tend to think that the excessive trash would cover that.
Well, we'll add some language to kind of, to be clear on that point. Can we assume that staff will take care of that? Okay, thank you. And you can do this by simple motion tonight if you'd like.
Okay, so we want to do the motion to accept with those changes? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Thank you, Mr. Sloot. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I just have a five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. Item thirteen is citizen comment, period?
So no one has signed up to speak, sir.
And I don't have anything this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ham. Item fifteen, item fifteen is a closed session as authorized by section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-one of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that this meeting be recessed and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A and one to discuss personal matters regarding the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the city, more specifically to discuss the city manager's employment terms.
This requires a roll call vote, Ms. Boardman?
Listen, I'll second.
I have a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
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 We're in closed session.
We have to wait on Mike?
We have to wait on Mike? We don't have to wait on Mike, do we?
No.
All right.
Okay, is there a motion to return to open session and certify the closed session?
Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this city council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second.
It requires a roll call vote, Ms. Boarder.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Reverend Barcandby?
Aye.
Justice Short?
Aye.
Justice Wood?
Aye.
We're in open session. Item sixteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short, is a second?
I second.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. -- I'll give it to Mr. Slope.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. (end of transcript)